Dave.
Yes, sir.
They're calling the roll.
Oh, here. Yes.
Okay, number three, presentation petitions, other communications, we have nothing this evening. Number four, our report of standing committee, policy administration, DJ.
No report.
Public safety and transportation, Stephen.
No report.
Utility committee, Stephen. We have nothing on the stormwater accounts. Thank you, sir. So I should remember a while back we raised the stormwater fee at $3. Since that time, I've been monitoring the revenue that's coming in on it to make sure that we're on track. We're not beating the revenue for this year 22. So a while back, I asked the staff in the utility building to review our stormwater accounts. They reviewed 325 accounts. There's a, there's a, in the system, you can tell accounts that are charged and are not. So when they ran that reporters 325, then the individual went through those accounts and found out that 99 accounts were not being charged stormwater that should have been. This is, my best guess is this is things that have happened, although several, 10, 15 years, where when they should have been put on, they were not. So this was brought to utility and updated down. But our plan is, is to send out letters to the affected parties, letting them know that now when we charge that stormwater fee, that I'll be, I'm not going to let you directly do, we're obviously not going to go back and charge of the past, just start fresh. So those letters are going to go out, we're showing the, I've seen the letters that President came up with and approved them. So those, those are going to go out. So this is something the full council will let you know, they should get a call. So this is a fee of $3.
Sounds good. I don't think you want to go back and charge. It might already be a way to solve it. Get this bill.
So with this, do you, would we meet the revenue from this 22?
Yeah, I don't think we'll, we'll meet what is, what we have projected. So when we do budget this official 24, that revenue will be, will change.
Hey, Economic Development Committee, Terry. No report. Five department reports going to finish this. This evening, Finance Officer. See you.
Thank you. As you recall, we had discussed in post session, the loss of county filed against the F. The city voted for grade district 137, which is from our sewer system. Obviously, that didn't hold these. We agreed we would take care of the solution to make that work as efficiently as possible. But when we talked about it, we were, we, the city were a very pressure, we're supervisors as trustees of the great district. We're willing to contribute one half of the cost, $150,000 and allow us till July 1st, 2026 to accomplish what we need and to serve the nation. Unfortunately, in their wisdom, they decided $45,000. A appropriate amount, so they have offered $45,000. Cost absolutely no issue on it. But I still encourage us to, in case resolved, and want their five acres, inexpensive ways. It's still there. Unless somebody has, God, unless somebody has some strong objection to. See, I will at some point, some kind of sense of. That's all I have.
Director of Public Force, John Ross.
No report.
Engineer, we have an also, also saving chief house.
No report, Your Honor.
Chief people.
Yes, John. As we discussed multiple times, we have a new school going into town. As my department looks at that, the location of it, we're certainly concerned about the intersection of Highway 30 and Popple Center Drive. So with your permission, what I'd like to do is talk to the DOT about possibly moving that 45 speed limit back to the top of the hill or east of the limits, so that the cars coming over the hill down to that intersection are going slower than. I think that might make that intersection safer. So I guess I, I will do whatever you guys like. So if you'd like me to do that also, have a conversation. Would you like me to? I think it hopefully did. Or do I stop? Yeah, we should get by and help on it. Correct, absolutely. Awesome. On that safety token, so we work with the government's Traffic Safety Bureau every year. And we work project with the staff. And we have, as part of that, we get a grant for some equipment. So in the past, we, they kind of lend this, limited that equipment to either TDCs for our patrol cars or even our cameras. So the last three years, we got a grant for our cars, but that was usually city tax vehicles. Which is not great. This year, they kind of opened that up. So this year, what I applied for was two solar powered radar speed signs. Not speed cameras, but speed signs put on both ends of that 45 speed limit that help alert drivers that, hey, you're entering a 45 speed limit, this speed's going to be similar to what they have on Highway 17 at Luther. That's what I'm going to put up here. So that would be, we were, a lot of that, they approved that. So after October 1st, I, so, and that will be about 80% covered by the GTS. So well, I'll have to use a little bit of my project.
What are those costs?
Between $3,000 and $5,000 apiece. So that depends on how big you get and what other options. We're going to try and get as big as we possibly can, so people can see them the best. We're going to provide us a very daylight, or supplies, or sunlight shining on them for the drivers. All right, well, thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Bill. Thanks, sir. Two items on the agenda and some updates for you this evening. First one is fiscal year 22 goals reporting to you. Your first goal that you have for this year 22 was demolition and nuisance abatement of private property. Statistics shows that we handled 271 nuisance abairments, mowed 260 yards, moved snow on 135 sidewalks. There were seven demolitions to include 628 story street. And another one was up in the 21 block of Carroll Street, which was a demolition. That was a open safety issue that we handled relatively quickly. That has been now completed as well. And then sent out three notices of no orders of demolitions of property that we'll continue to work on. We generally try to have, as a staff, three to five demolitions a year. So we exceeded that this year, plus with the big one at 628 Story Street. Your second goal was Bay South Marion, City West Park. The update on that is we probably led that project over the winter and the structure spring in 2023. S E H is in the design stage at this current time. The last one was continuing ED reference housing developments downtown and wellness center. As you know, we're going to have a special election March of 23 for the wellness center. We're working with the ACDC on some other projects. We have the housing project at 22nd Land. And in addition, for downtown, we just, quite recently, the city got $100,000 CAGR for A12 K Street. So we'll continue to work on those things. But that, those are the, the results of your goals for 2022 extended to June. So if you go to your goals for 2023, first one is always demolitions and nuisance ban. We'll continue to work on that. Your second one was a, is a city ordinance review. As we talked about, the whole set, that'll take several years. I will tell you that a plan that we've come up with is probably going to be delayed because Ed has agreed to stay another year, as you know, Tom made it, I had conversations with him. He would be the perfect person to do that. So we'll, we'll continue to have these conversations and see what that goes to future, unless there's some other direction. Continue promoting the city of voters, your third goal. If you know, sometimes you've seen we have commercials running on ACCI as well as the main street project, the financial committee for that. In addition, so staff has had some conversations, just at the staff level. It was brought to us that, about getting information out to the public and making that as easy as possible. We're looking at, I don't know if that's possible quite right. But we are looking at some ways to do that. And one of those ways is a communication specialist, that's what they do. Obviously, that costs money, whether or not that is an employee or that is a contract company to do that for. This is just really tonight, a heads up, that we're talking about it. We had a lengthy staff meeting today on it, discussed it quite in detail, I think. Yes, it was good for me because I got some opinions from the department there on how to take media report. So that's coming in the future. I've got some feelers out to other people to get some advice, things like that, see what sticks. What I'm finding out is, in today's world, a lot of governments are going to that position. Quite frankly, to make it easier for the public. So.
That's going to be my question is, how common is cities our size having that position?
Sure, Viviana has one, Oxon Ames has one. There are also sometimes, if you're doing as a KIO, Public Information Officers, but they handle all the social media, everything that has to do with the city, getting information out. And we just don't have the staff for that. And so I can't just add that as somebody to give me. So I think it's worth a discussion as we move forward. If you're okay, I'll probably start then, we just getting that policy and administration initially and have a discussion with them first before bringing that. Obviously, like I said, it costs money to do that. We'll look at that and see what's the best way to go and raise some ideas. I just, I want to take some too, to give you guys a heads up on, on that. If we're really going to do it, how, some of you have expressed to me how you want to do it. It's going to take some action to get it done if you really want, want to do it in the way I think today's world that we.
I think we need to explore that at least, as I, as I shared. People had commented that they really didn't know that much about our folks and, and, you know, and we had said we have our radio and the news, but people continue to say, I really didn't know that much about it. So I think.
And I think that's another part of this too, is as we knew of the special election in 2022, we're getting information out. Whether that's something you all decide in the next few months, that, hey, maybe we need to hire a firm of office with that, get that up. Maybe that's connected to this informational officer or communication specialist as well. You can then refer to your contract. Or, you know, the other option is just look for an employee to do it so that you have more control, have them available all the time. I would be honest with you, I don't think the position for the city room warrants full time position. I just don't think there's enough. But it's very important that that's what you folks want to get out. But it's not going to be eight hours a day, every single day. So we need to figure that out. Starting at the committee, you can bring staff on, whatever. You also need to let everyone know, I posted on Facebook, my council page, anyone in the city can sign up for email. All they have to do is contact the city president, get on that email list, get an email list. They'll get the same information, the same packets that you get via email. That's all the council members, everything. So I mean, I don't, I don't think people are aware of that. That's, that's a really good way of getting all the information. And you can also opt in to the council, too, as well. All they have to do is call in, sign up. The mix old, real measures, eventually that, Marcia did that, signed up, she could see what else. People, I don't think people are aware of it. So you might want to share it on Facebook. More questions on that? Okay, my next, I, on your desk, you have a copy of the ACDC intercity leadership visits that they do every year in Congress, they go out of state, different cities and do this. This year, they chose to do in-state, which is a sidewalk. For, that on the number. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Eli, yeah, the sheet that you have on there is, oh, that's true. You got it. So the fourth goal is the sidewalk program. That sheet is on your desk of what we're going to use. They just need to send something or contact your building office. As you remember, what he put together as a goal was we funded it for $10,000. The city will pay up to 25% of the cost for someone who put a new sidewalk in an existing neighborhood. So that's on there. Eli, is there any further questions?
Yes, yes. This is, sorry, technical.
Yeah, thanks. Okay. So now, my next one is the leadership visits to cities in Marion on August 16th, to New Haven on August 17th, City Falls on 18th. If there's any council members, particularly on the ED committee, that are interested in going, those are the dates, it isn't overnight, they'll be gone, everybody goes on bus. ACDC makes all the arrangements, the cost is $7.50 per person. If there's anybody interested on council that wants to go that, or if you want me to go on that, or they need some guidance, so that we can let them know, because I need to register. People, let them know who's going, if anybody has any interest on that, all of those dates. August 16th, 17th, and 18th.
And purple Sunday is on.
Networking with other communities to get ideas on, on different things they've done, for example, for housing, or they're downtown. Anybody connected with Main Street would be, might be worth you going as well. This invitation has been sent to the chamber by ACDC. So this is something, again, I don't say anything tonight, but if you want to think about it, give it over the next pair or so. They only can take 30, so if the wait's long and the slots are taken, then we don't get to go. So if anybody has an interest, is this something that you want me to attend?
We honestly have one person at school, I don't hear available.
Okay. And then is two days enough time to figure out who I go and you can let me know if I don't hear anything by COB Thursday? Then. Yeah. Okay. Right, yeah. It's okay. Moving on. My next item is, I just want to give you an update on the fiscal year 2022 budget that they did use there. We did not have all the numbers in, but I go through those budget updates every month. And here's what I've noticed, and I think I'm very, I'm comfortable here about this. Well, she has noticed increases where we, expenses that we are seeing, gas and oil, not surprised. Utilities, not surprised, we talked about that before, liability insurance. And if you look at money that we've got from the insurance company, the claims we have, that probably has something to do with, but it's still an increase, it's still more money than what we budgeted and that we had, that we had to pay. And then chemicals at the plants. Utility committee obviously will understand that chemicals have gone up considerably. We used a lot more chemicals at the water plant than the new wastewater, but it's still the same with utilities. If you've seen that budget, it's over $200,000 in utilities in a year. Those, those are going out. So kind of more of that does, and then let you know that department heads are aware of it, and they're going to track, keep it in mind. My next one is 22nd and Lynn Street. If you remember, when you approved the site plan, there were some issues with the water supply. They sent a site plan, they're going to send an updated one in the next few days. We believe we've got that problem solved. If there are any issues, we'll come back. So thank you, we've got it solved. The next one is all the rain we had, several weeks ago, five to seven inches. There was questions with staff about brick cutting in some areas. I will tell you, the public works has completed in fiscal year 22, 28 blocks of brick cutting, plus they cleaned 96 blocks from Maine. If you have any questions on that, JR can probably answer. I guess I can't really say what the 96 blocks of Maine is, because other than, I'm assuming we're carrying them and flushing them out. That's correct.
We're trying to put an actual school chain, that's good. Cleaning them just with the high pressure water system that goes through this phase and out of the wall.
Okay. Very good. My next update is, as you know, we lost our engineer a year ago and could not find one where we advertised. Just to give you an update, generally with an engineer, you're going to pay. It was around $105,000 salary, and then you add benefits onto that. What we spent with S E H, now this isn't the total amount we spent with them, but it's what we spent with them for general engineering, not specific project. That was just about, just under $19,000. So there's a net gain there. Obviously, you're, the rest of that looks falling on your staff, but that is a savings for the city in this year. And, and I, my, my suggestion would be that we try to have a year and go with it and see where it is. But, but it is savings in fact. So that's why I wanted to let you all know. My last item is a tour of the Slater facility. It's a wastewater facility. It is a gross wind tech treatment facility. This is a, a green project. It's a pilot project. It comes from, the information I received, it has come from the ICHY research park, at least designated there. There are pilot projects around the country, Slater is one. It's where the, the waste is treated by algae and not where we get it and then we have to get it to the wall, or that wall, and, and increase the concentration of the kandiru leaves from the plant. So there are some dates, I plan on going to this. So July 26th or July 28th, we need to pick a date from 10:30 to 12:30. I don't know if utility committee, if you had any desire to look at this. The reason why is, this is not only something that you can install at a wastewater plant and treat it, but it can be installed on site. So we've had conversations before about possible business expansion where they close up ways of high concentration that goes, adds up with our permit, the DNR, we don't think so much. And on site, my understanding of this project, if you did it on site, it lessens the concentration, so you can take more on that business. That might be an option, as you know, we're waiting for a wastewater study from S E H on that, so that we can increase our capacities in the future, so that our businesses can expand. I will tell you that there are big conversations with our current businesses that, that send this, this high concentration of expansion, may, this may be an option. That's why I think this is important to talk about and why I'm going to go. And if there's anybody in the utility committee that would like to go, so just give us. Yeah, so it's either, if you can check, standard, you have two dates, either the 26th of July or the 28th of July from 10:00 to 12:00. And then they're going to supply lunch.
Just, I would do either.
Okay, so I mean, one, so Eli, you'd like to go?
Yeah.
Stephen? Okay, we'll pop Stan. Do you have a date? Do you want?
Don't care.
Do you carry your date? So I'll shoot from 28, from 10:30 to 12:30. And I'll, and I'll leave you all alone once it, once it's. Unless there's any questions for me, that's all I have.
Questions?
We have a, just a brief report on Washington, Tuesday.
Oh, I was kind of saying that to David, who's been on the last time. But yeah, it was, it was very, very good. We met with Representative Bistruck, Senator Ernst, Senator Grassley, and then delegation. We got really good contact information. And I'll tell you, Representative Bistruck's office actually had, their rep for Ottawa has actually already known consent that trip to confirm what we did, which I thought was, was very good. I think we have some avenues to seek funding for Wellness Center if it moves forward, as well as when we get, the other project that we took out there was the wastewater plant. Because when that study was out there, we knew we maybe, having to make some improvements out there. We wanted to support our businesses and the expansion that they may have. So it was very good. That one, we got a lot of good information, good contacts, and it was definitely worth the trip. And I think, David, if you heard that, did you have anything to add?
I think that's pretty good. There was a lot of good networking, a lot of good conversations. And like you said, ideas for the wastewater and the Wellness Center, should that come to fruition. Very worthwhile. There was also some presentations by Department of Energy and USDA and some workforce people, things like that.
Yeah, well, it was very much worth the time. And if they go connected, then I'm coming back and say, hey, we go again.
Okay, number six, consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that you'd like to move and discuss separately? And I didn't know what you were doing. Second, call roll.
Science?
Yes.
Foreman?
Yes.
Phil Piper?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Fur?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Okay, number seven, ordinance is a third reading ordinance, 2279, to allow the city boom to change the department regulations on First Street from Boone Street to Green Street. Sorry, call roll.
Foreman?
Yes.
Phil Piper?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
We'll do it now. Call roll.
Phil Piper?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Foreman?
Yes.
Okay, number eight, Mayor's office. I put on here tonight, that's the one, I will have to go for, brought to my attention that, so let me give you a little background on this. When this thing was created, City of Boone, if you remember on there, it's always had a member. Brought to my attention that we had a representative, our representative was Gary Knight. He was defeated in the last election he was in. He asked Bill, I think, to stay on as our representative, so still be able to put, put him on there. Since I found out that they have voted the city boom off the board, Gary is now the president of the CIE board. And we were never contacted, we were never told why. I just had Bill send questions. I said, I want to know about, cops have all signed paperwork and dates and times of the change in the CIE board where the city was removed. Who was the seventh, who was a member of the seven members of CIE board and who they represented at the time of the change? What was the vote to remove the city and who voted for and or against? Explanation why the city was never notified if we need to move both prior and after it's moved and stepping forward. So it, it just concerns me that we were voted off the board that we helped create. And we got over $100,000 that we put into the site. We, I entrusted our rep to keep us posted on what was going on. Now I find out he's now the president of that board, did create a new bylaws that, correct? And we are no longer involved, spoken. So I want to update you on that. I don't, I don't think it's right, I don't think it's ethical. I, we helped put that thing together. So it's just odd to me, and we have no rumor, no rumor about it. They've taken that board and the new board is. They've taken that board and the new board is uh made up of three people and supervisors. Those three people then take the other two, so basically a total county full board. Five persons of five persons. And four of seven, so we almost started all that on our issue. I was on the first one, you know. He brought that too, he had that too. Yeah, that passed, so that whole thing would be gone with the city's initiative. If you just act, it will say it's, yep. So, you know, it's it's a little bit disturbing when you just have their own, do their own thing, going down, representing the area. I just, that's right. Problem is, I, in due faith, this council voted to have him be our representative. And if he doesn't tell us that we're kicked off the board, then he's newly created, now he's the president of the board. I don't find that even, I don't find it right. The other thing that's bothering me, I have him on a couple of boards, and I just don't know that I have faith in. This kind of actually, I can rule this.
Was there any rationale to this or why?
Well, you talked to Gary. Gary, we we, he talked to him by phone and asked why or whatever. Uh he tried to pass up on previous, he was our representative, it doesn't matter. He was represent us, keep us updated on what was going on. We've never heard a thing, other than we're no longer on the board. Even before we discussed that, he'd come upon you as their role appointment. And come to you and say, this is what they want. Yep, what's the city do on this? So we got a hundred thousand dollars of that and they're not living up to their expectations. We committed, I don't know, twenty five, thirty thousand, whatever it was, working up to a hundred thousand dollars for that site and to help get that thing going, creating the board, did all these things, we had representatives on. Gerald Rensen is the person that lived, yep. On there and then since, you know, when he retired, we've had other people. And then when Gary was defeated, he came to us and said, would you mind if I stayed on that board? I said, sure. Other than any other financial asks to the city that, I don't recall any coming on. Uh they recently asked if they could use our streets for, and uh for some concern. I'm not really, I don't have to have to pay to allow them to use this, if we put it out on the board without any explanation for it. I mean, and we, I reached out to them on the twenty fourth with these questions. I heard nothing. And I did talk to all the board members at this point, as they mentioned, he was sold by Gary and they didn't have to give us anything. They literally were, well, that's fine, I I want to know why we are not on that. We helped create, we helped, we've got a lot of money in this. Well, I think it's still worth, worth the time for us to continue to investigate why we're not on the board and how we can still have a say. Because, you know, if they don't want us to be on there, then I don't see the point of saying we're trying to partner or do anything to stop this. We part of that, there's a new one. Uh but I think in the meantime, if we're not going to, till that figured out, we don't have a representative, so I guess probably that ties with what we're saying now. Go ahead, Joe. If uh since I was appointed by you to be on the airport commission, I told you that the airport commission, I decided as chairman that we're gonna sell the airport. How long would I be on that commission? Probably not very long. I mean, I just never really had this in my, is in good faith, it was, I was.
Don't get any dish about selling here.
Yeah, don't even think. Is Mr. Neitz on any other? Yeah, it's on the library, Mariori, appoint is on the library board and the wing, so my question to you, if the council is on. Now, that's why I'm, I'm addressing this tonight. I'm concerned, I don't, you know, I I just like to show you the contact, it's here's the plan, we're thinking about doing, here's why. Uh but you do something like that, you don't tell anybody? Still couldn't give Bill straight answers why it wasn't going to happen. But he's, that had, now he is the president, all the new papers, he's the president, chair of the committee. Uh so it's a little self-serving, well, it's it's concerning. And so. I don't have a message, I guess. I just, it's very, it's like there's approaching that on people from all sides to keep trying to mimic our city government. I think that Eric makes those appointments. I know, I speak for myself, a member of the council, I think Mayor should have that say to decide what happens to this person still on there and the others. I think if you decide that that person's expertise will be all set. It comes to us. Yep. But I think it's fine. Am I wrong here to think I'm, I don't, I don't understand what happened, I just.
I guess the part that I, I guess I would question is why there's a a good response or a good answer.
Okay. There's something, how did you get something?
Correct, I mean, there's no, yeah.
Did you get a good answer, though? According to, he, he told me between the former president and taking responsibility. It's like, with no, it's a county, he could, he he did comment that um they didn't feel that seven was efficient, so they got five, I think, better. I don't know. That was previous position and successful. Uh I think it was, obviously the county has representative. Uh we, we don't know, because they will get this kind of original bylaws. Okay. It's, so there are other, there are other entities that are, well. I think a lot of them voluntarily said that's what we were never even asked. Yeah. Sure is, yeah. But then once they recreated the board, it's now the supervisors paying the three and the three paying two. Um see why I'm all happy that we set a law on that, well, we just want to say that. So, so. Well, um it would be very, I think, find out if there's some way where we can still retain that seat there regardless. Because it's symbiotic relationship between the economic um development of city and hotels and. According to them, we're off, we're out. So. Well, I think there's, if any, any possible way to continue with dialogue to reconsider that, I would be supportive of that as well because I think it's the whole, and these messages is cooperating, collecting for the board. And I always thought we, we need to find a way to have our voice on there. And so if there are some things that we don't know about, we can address, then we can look at, so. Would that be a little bit? Yeah, we can continue, pop, I'm saying, yeah, try and continue to have the current bylaws that have been amended by private people that are there, so. Yeah, the board supervisors decided to move representatives, hopefully, they clearly should do that.
Personally, I think that should stay.
Whole spring to terminal.
Yeah, I, I agree, I am, it's it's probably worth reaching out, but why didn't they do that when this call came to wish? And Gary was leading that charge, so.
You know, when that happened, we just have to be part of the whole.
Yeah, I, I agree, I just, I just think that should sit, if it comes to this, try to work that out, right? Just have.
Sometimes I do. What was your thought about on, on current? I think that, well, that's only a rest of you, I'm fine with that, so there's. Well, I don't care who it is, that's where they're gonna be, they don't want it. By a point of why I always do counts, you know, it was approved, so if I'm gonna remove, I also want to, you know, I just think. You do it the same way, and, yes, London.
Just listening, I think the real question is, can you trust the man anymore? Because there's a betrayal of trust here, a betrayal of respect to the city council, in my opinion, from just listening. The fact that he didn't have the respect to tell you what was going on, that you sent out, reached out, and he's not responding. Um I create each council member here and say, you know, you're in a tough spot, but he's on any boards that could be detrimental. His decision could be detrimental as well, so this became it. So each person has to ask, do they trust him? Does he betray your trust? And I mean, is that really for the community, best for the community?
Well, I, it may not be totally necessary, but I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we a motion to support the mayor to rescind the appointments of the individual in question. And also for uh mayor's staff to continue to investigate how we can still remain and have a voice and role in this.
Can we split that?
I'll make a motion that the uh.
Yeah. All right, I'll make a motion to uh to support the mayor in rescinding of
Questions, will I make a question?
I'll tell them.
Okay. So today, I'm.
Motion is, motion is for the mayor, so for the council to support the mayor to rescind the individual questions, representation of the city.
I'll second.
Call roll.
Williamson? Yes. Ray?
Yes.
Per?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Science?
Epstein.
Mormon?
Yes.
Phil Piper?
Yes. Yeah, I'll also make a motion that our staff to continue looking into ways that City Boone's interested in being a member of the city.
Science.
Call roll. Second. Second. Okay.
Ray?
Yes.
Per?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Phil Piper?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Okay, the uh council on the comments.
Thank you, Pat.
Yeah.
Um first thing I wanted to ask is, and I'll describe this, downtown area, you can come down this. There are sidewalk areas that have been cut out and they're filled with wood. Mulch kind of area, and it was talked to fill those in um because it, something needs to be done with it. I don't know if there were plantings there in previous years, city, any one of those spaces.
It's worth treating.
Okay, and so my question is, whether then that, what concrete in those or something? Could we maybe make this one of our first steps and if we are approved as a Main Street community, which we're doing that presentation on the fourteenth, so we should hear, they said, within a week of that. Um could we make that one of our, maybe one of the first things that Main Street was doing for that downtown area to beautify? And, you know, certainly over to them, at least for this session, we certainly could give ideas or they could bring ideas back to us. Um doesn't need to be a big project, but I know just downtown, we've got several areas that are brick. You know, kind of, it'd be nice maybe if we could fill those with brick cabs and match that. So to me, it's kind of our first opportunity to start working on that whole of beautifying downtown. So I guess I just want to bring that, is that a, would that be a good way to start on that? And it would show the community that we're, you know, here's our first step, a small step that we're starting on, in that some of those different approaches.
Because we're having a big rush to fill this. Well, we've done two already here every year.
Yeah, it's just concrete, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've had some places, it's the mulch.
Yeah.
And it is driving us, but we have a couple of people walking down. I mean.
But I'm not saying. That's great, though.
If we could open a time of the, you know, I think the brick would match and even if there's some gathering with it.
It's a stencil that they put, they sell with brick, it's a stencil.
Yeah, looks good, though.
So.
Are, can I ask the public works staff, if they'll maybe hire?
Uh, the two that was done, started out, they did just street or sidewalk repair. We just put that on there, we got eight four for this. And that's how we sort of gonna approach it, sidewalk here, so that we fill up them.
As long as it's solid. Playing stuff.
Tur, turbo, well, yeah, that's a maintenance thing, a turbo, a maintenance thing. Yeah, there's one, the four classes were four, that's a kind of type of station. And there's gonna have garden, so, 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 how that goes. And then you can see the cracks along the streets or sidewalk, we built in spray.
I just thought it'd be an opportunity to do something with, so we have to, so.
About the downtown motivation, but yeah, that's important.
Retire, moving budget for, um with all the flowers and the, the green spaces, stuff like that.
And I don't know if that, about the Main Street budget, because we also have money in that and and I think our, the budget for uh the first year is sixty five thousand for Main Street. So that also might be spots to do that, and and to me, it would, because that whole area is the area that we're really going to target to develop and and revitalize. So to me, this is a real chance to then start doing some of that.
Well, I think before you do that, I'm sure that you identify how to set sidewalk actually has to come out. That there are a lot of sections to that sidewalk. And I think part of that, part of the, and you don't want to spend a bunch of money on. Cover to tear out.
And redo.
Yeah, so I think that those areas need to be identified first.
Is that okay, we gotta put on gold, or, but at least now I'm gonna pursue, yeah, some other things. Um just a few things on the Main Street application that that, like I said, there's a presentation on the fourteenth um by the City of Boone, and then they said within a week, we should hear if we are approved for that. Um the budget would be about sixty five thousand for the first year. We have identified a hundred and ninety three buildings that are in the defined territory. Um that would be part of the Main Street and and we've got the, um it goes from the main ice tower up to, is it Twelfth Street where that first Casey's is? Uh the, that's kind of the the downtown area. And we, the uh application is really, really extensive and uh we've had a lot of good help on uh the status of many of those buildings. Uh Main Street, the other thing that I will share is, Main Street is really, really driven by volunteers. Um there is one higher kind of director and we're doing this with a chamber. Um but Nebraska's volunteers, so hopefully um the community gets behind it and they think it's a good idea so that we can really drive that. The other thing, I guess I, the other question I wanted to raise for the group is is it a good idea or wouldn't it be a good idea to schedule a work session? And I don't know how often the council has done work sessions, I know when I was on the school board, we we did it frequently. Um and those just give you an opportunity to discuss things that you're not gonna wanna make decisions, but my question is would it be appropriate for us to have a work session to talk about moving forward on a community center with maybe the recreation director? Um looking at that, um really looking at where, where are we headed with that? Um the fundraising, the promotion, the publicity. I, I guess I feel like, I don't think we should just go ahead and put it up for hope. Quickly without doing a lot of that whole work and really preparing and getting the community involved. So um I'm wondering if we shouldn't have a work session to kind of talk about how would we do that? And I know some of the fundraising, I think it's already started, and it's been proven. Uh people actively involved. So um I just wonder if we need to have a session where we talk about what do we think? How, how are we gonna approach this? So we don't get the same result, maybe if people say, I really don't know, and, and so I'm, I'm just passing down. Um the other thing is, I was gonna ask, the rail explorers, I think that's really exciting. When's, when's the uh council going on the rail explorers?
July twenty-first, is that right? July twenty-first, something like that, at the end of the month. Yeah, I can't wait. We should do a council.
Right, I figured you'd get on the.
Phil Bell.
Uh. That round, that bridge is really high up there.
Hi. I had that feeling myself.
And you're right on the end, Justin.
But it does look exciting. We might overlook that and it, it looks just, I mean, really neat. And I said, between the rail explorers and going up in the, the garden, the helicopters and then going on the property, I mean. You ought to be on the council, but you just walk through all these crazy areas. That's all I've got.
Okay. Any other uh council comments? Are there any public comments?
Uh thanks to Knights on Green folks, the uh C D B, uh you know, it's a good event when you have to carry your tomber off kicking and screaming.
Not ready to leave.
Yeah, the, the heat of the ice cream.
I mean, we actually clicked in about seven hours.
Okay, that was pretty impressive.
So it was pretty packed, but there was a lot going on. Thanks to the fire department, police department for coming up.
Yeah.
And, and public relations and the guard and.
Yeah, I think whatever activity that involves the power panel, that's, that's really cool, too. Some of my members from work, when, they really enjoy it, just so.
And the four-year-old granddaughter just did pull-ups for the prison arrangements.
Hey, any other comments?